Evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. Tonight is our April 14th meeting of the Board. All members are present. We have just adjourned an executive session for several purposes. Number one, purpose of discussing strategies with respect to potential litigation by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the MBTA zoning legislation and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3. Also for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to the New England Police Benevolent Association, the patrolmen, and public safety dispatchers in accordance with Mass. General Law. And for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value real property at 333 Endover Street in accordance with Mass. General Law. And for the purpose of discussing outstanding litigation in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I also want to thank all of my colleagues and the staff who are wearing blue here this evening in honor of April is Autism Awareness Month, as you are aware, so thank you all for that this evening. We have transmitting of Treasury warrants. We have... 2540? Nope, that one. That one. This one right now?
That one right there.
Okay, thank you. We have Treasury warrants, 2539, 2539T, 2539S, 2540, 2540W, 2540T, 25141, 2541W, 2541T, and 2541S. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I believe you missed 2539W.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that on purpose.
Okay. So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you all. All those in favor? Unanimous? Mr. Slagel?
Yes, I have a motion to approve Treasury warrant number 2539W.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It's 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Slagel. There are no minutes to approve this evening, so we'll move right into our first appointment. We're just a few minutes behind. My apologies. Our first appointment is a public hearing, Mr. Eugene T. Sullivan on behalf of Lucci's Realty. If you're here, sir, please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
And as you're getting situated here, we'll welcome you, but I want to let the public know that this is an application for an earth removal permit for the property located at 226 Lowell Street, and this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to make a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Make a motion to open?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of opening the public hearing? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. So, sir, good evening to you, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. Perhaps you want to just introduce yourself and the reason that you're before us?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. My name is Gene Sullivan. I'm an engineer here in town. I prepared some filings with the Planning Board and Conservation Commission on behalf of Lucci Realty Trust for some site improvements to 226 Lowell Street. 226 Lowell is on the corner of Woburn and Lowell. It's a two-story office building. You may know it because their buses have been stored there historically, just to give you guys a point of reference. And we have put together some changes to the parking lot that'll allow for more landscaping along the street where they're doing the improvements, and also some stormwater improvements. We aren't adding any building or anything else. We're actually reducing the amount of pavement on the property by creating some stormwater swales to treat runoff more with today's regulations versus what we did back in the 1980s. So our earth removal permit is actually to allow us to take about 13,000 cubic yards of material from the site off-site. This is generated by excavating the swales, the water treatment swales. It should be mostly loom material, maybe some gravel, but mostly loomy, organic material that will be taken from the site. We've been working with Paul and I from the Engineering Department. I know he had some draft conditions, and we've looked at and find them all acceptable.
Okay, great. Thank you. And for the Board and for the public, do we have positive recommendations here, Mr. Slagel?
Yes, we do. We have a positive recommendation from the Planning Board, a positive recommendation from the Health Department, and as the applicant mentioned, the town engineer issued a positive recommendation subject to 14 conditions in his recommended...
Great, thank you. And so, Mr. Sullivan, just so you can know what to expect, I'm going to open it up. Board members might have questions or comments, and then since this is a public hearing, perhaps someone from the public might want to ask a question. Then we'll close the public hearing and we'll take a vote.
Okay.
Okay. Any of my colleagues have questions or comments for the applicant? Mr. West?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Sullivan. Just one question. You're taking, you said, 13,000 square feet of earth?
Cubic yards, yes.
Cubic yards. Where is that going?
Most of it will be loom, so it'll be sold to companies that deal in that trade. Our site contractor is actually taking most of the material to his yard, and then he'll bring it to other projects or sell it to the public. His yard's up in Endover.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. This is a public hearing, and if anyone would like to be heard on this particular issue, please come forward. Not all at once. All right. Excellent. Anything else you want to share with us before we... You have some cards?
Have my certified notices.
Beverly will take those from me. Thank you, Bev. Okay, well then, I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a tie?
Mr. Kyra.
Tie goes to Ms. Maselli. All right.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote to close the public hearing. All those in favor? It is unanimous. The public hearing is now closed. Would any member like to offer approval of this application?
I'll make a motion to accept the application for earth removal at 226 Lowell Street.
Thank you. Sir, is there a second?
Me? Second.
Second. This one goes to Mr. Kyra.
Subject to those...
Yes, thank you. And Mr. De Palma, correct me if I'm wrong, but your motion includes the 14 stipulations outlined in the...
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Kyra. Next jump ball goes to Lil. So, all those in favor? It is unanimous, sir. The application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
You too.
Take care.
George.
Yes. Thank you. I just want to check to see if... Is Erica Marsh on here? Erica? I was kind of hoping she'd be here. We do have another...
What is that, Mr. Bendel?
What's that?
Why is that?
Samples?
This looks like a nice place. I saw they're opening up. Well, later on, perhaps, we'll... In just a few minutes, we'll be able to take up our third appointment. I don't see the applicant here yet for an entertainment license, so I'd be looking for a motion to table the second appointment. I don't know if anyone wishes...
Nope.
Is so willing to do so.
You're going to table me? No, not this time around.
Table a third.
Mr. Chair, can I begin this next appointment?
Chair recognizes Mr. Kyra for 30 seconds, yes. No, go ahead.
That's all it's got to take. This is your last meeting for your position as selectman until next time in about two or three years when you come back, we hope, the residents hope.
Just don't look out there.
Greg, we came in nine years. I cannot believe it's been nine years that we came in together. Charlotte is only eight, right? And I got to tell you that this town is going to miss your leadership. It's going to miss your dedication. You've given so much to the residents of this town, hours and hours upon work, and people don't realize the amount of commitment it takes. And, you know, the time away from the family that it takes to be a volunteer for this town on the Board of Selectmen, on the school committee, on the Planning Board. You know, we're all volunteers, and we give so much back to the town. But I got to tell you, no one gives more than you, and I don't care what anybody says. You know, this town is really going to miss your leadership. It has benefited tenfold for the amount of work that you've done, the initiatives that you created, your energy, your willingness to share, the... Just, I just can't say enough, you know? And I'll tell you, I'm going to miss, most of all, our phone calls to the meeting and our phone calls after the meeting. I'm going to have withdrawals. I don't know who I'm going to be able to talk to anymore. It's just like, you know, he's... It's like a bromance between the two of you. Too crazy, but I mean, you know? But it... You have such a beautiful family, and I certainly don't blame you for taking a sabbatical, you know, with Charlotte and Grace and Madeline and, of course, your lovely wife Andrea and your parents are here tonight as well, and many of your former colleagues are here this evening as well. And I want to thank you all for being here to welcome, congratulate, and wish Mr. Bendel best and hope that it's a short time. But I do know that even though you're not going to be serving on the Board of Selectmen at this time, the Select Board, I'm just... They have it to say Board of Selectmen. You know, we have you on the school, the Wildwood School Committee project. We still have you there. We're not letting you go from that important position, and I'm sure anything else you desire to serve on. But you may have some coaching in the future to do as well. You know? But I'm just going to pass it along if any of my colleagues have any words to say.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that, and I appreciate that you read it exactly the way I wrote it. But no, I really appreciate those words. Thank you so much. Gary?
Five years ago when I ran, the first person to sit down with me was Greg. He told me the pitfalls, told me the good, told me the bad, told me don't take anything personal. This is one time I'm going to take it personal because I will miss him more than anything for his support, his advice. But I look out and I see these three adorable children and across his lovely wife, and I go, it's time. It's time to watch your children grow, to enjoy them, to walk in every once in a while in a meeting and aggravate us. Will be great, but in all sincerity, I know we didn't disagree with everything, but we disagreed with a lot. I will miss you. The town will miss you, and I wish you nothing but the best. When I'm sitting on my deck on Monday nights before I leave, I'll wave to you to tell you, yeah, I'm going, and you're going to be laughing. So just enjoy. You know there's always... The town will always welcome you back, and I just wish you and your family nothing but the best.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right. Oh.
Please, thank you, Mr. Kyra.
I'm running this part of the meeting.
That's right.
Okay.
So I actually thought we took your not running under advisement, but apparently it's really happening. What can I say? So I am in my second term, and from the beginning of my first term, I definitely would not have made it through without Greg. And I mean that sincerely because I was new to the Board. I was chair. I didn't know what the heck I was doing, and he really, I mean, guided me, mentored me. I mean, he took my phone calls when you're on the soccer field, you know? So it was instrumental, really, really instrumental. And I concur what, you know, Kevin had said about what you do for this town and your leadership. I know I'm personally going to miss it, and, you know, I've... You've made it fun as well, you know? And I got a friend out of it, which is wonderful, but you do so much. I know, you know, your girls are young, and, you know, you should take the time and, you know, spend... It goes fast, trust me. It goes super fast, as I'm sure you're starting to know, because I can't believe your little one's four. We were having that discussion last week. I was like, what? No, but it's been an honor, honestly. You've taught me so much. I'm definitely better for it as a person and I hope as a Select Board member, but I will still call you even if you're on the soccer field, so for advice and just to say hello. And you have so much more to do and, you know, whenever you may or may not come back. I think it's in your blood to help people, so I look forward to see what you do in the future, and I just wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Kevin, who do you got next?
Mr. West? Yeah, what they said. But as you know, I've been going to Board of Selectmen meetings for years, sitting out in the audience, and, you know, many times I've had something to say, and you treated me with respect both as a member of the Board and also as chair, and I appreciate that. Since being on the Board, I've grown to respect you. I think that you've done awesome. You've had many contentious meetings that you've kept your cool and where, you know, I think that was a good thing. I did want to talk to you in a different forum. As you know, we're looking at the night of April 19th. In 1775, as you know, the Colonials struck their first blow to the British, and we're, you know, upon that 250th anniversary coming up. And one thing I'd like to present to you, if I may, is a coin from 1775.
Wow.
It's a British coin, which is what we had here at that time. And one of the things you'll notice is that it has a single hole, and I want you to think of this as a single shot. Did a Colonial create this hole? Did a British soldier create this hole? I don't know. We'll never know. But the thing is, is that I'd like you to have it as a sign and symbol of our first battle as a... What became the United States of America.
Thank you, Frank.
And the hole you're leaving in all our hearts.
Thank you very much.
Sweet. That's very good.
Three little girls, I need all the coins. I can get them.
It might pay for college, I don't know. Probably not.
Thank you, Frank.
Now, Mr. Slagel, remember now your evaluation is going to be heard at this meeting, so I just, you know...
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate it. I don't have the length of time working with you as other people around this table or in this audience do, but the last 10 months have certainly shown me what a person of integrity and character you are. It is rare to find a person who can handle the kind of situations that you find yourself in regularly with the kind of aplomb and maintaining a cool head and a good sense of humor. And so I will definitely miss, you know, your ability to get to the heart of things and to laugh about, you know, the realities of life while still doing your best for the town. And I wish you all the best, and I will do my best to be here when you come back.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Slagel. I don't want to spot anybody, but there are some colleagues out in the audience. Does anybody wish to say a few words? Sure. And just that you have to, for the record, please state your name and your address. We still want to be...
You name this in the ground, you've got this.
St. Louis School in 453 Shoshine Avenue here in Wilmington. We don't normally in the school committee say that we're speaking on behalf of the whole committee, but I can proudly say that I am actually speaking on behalf of the whole committee when I say that we're very grateful for your service to the town as a committee for working with us, for supporting the schools. You know, Mr. Bendel, it's... I've only worked with him very shortly personally, but I know my colleagues were like, someone has to go there and make sure he knows just how much we've appreciated him. So that's what I'm here for. Keep it short. And I really enjoyed working with you on the school project, and I think everyone... Everything that everyone said about your character has been borne out in the very short amount of time, too short that we got to work together.
I appreciate it.
From the committee, our thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I would refer to Mr. Newhouse as the ranking former member.
Greg, I just wanted to be sure to be here tonight, and I would echo a lot of the sentiments that were expressed earlier and maybe say it a little bit different way. I think that you'll find down the road that people may not remember how you made them think, but they always appreciated how you made them feel. And I think that's probably one of the biggest contributions that you've made to the Board and to the town for the past nine years. And so congratulations for that, and you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
That was Michael Newhouse, by the way. And you live where, Mike?
I'm Mike Shampoo Tang Glory Way. I'm embarrassed because I thought this was Kevin Kyra's last meeting.
Well, it could be. There's an election coming up on the 26th.
Beverly didn't prepare any comments for Greg. No, of course, I'm kidding. I'm going to end up repeating some of the things, but I did make a couple of notes about some terms that I wanted to make sure were uttered, and I think some of you have already said it. You're an example of what real volunteerism is. You know, it's giving of yourself selflessly, and you've been doing that for nine... Well, more than nine years. You were on the Housing Board for four years?
Five.
Five years prior to that. So I think that sometimes people forget about that. Your length of service to this town is admirable.
Thank you.
Your commitment, your time commitment, your effort, your kind of putting your own interests aside in the interest of the community and the people of this community. I hope that the people that are listening and watching this will recognize that and will appreciate your efforts, recognizing that, again, you guys are volunteers. You folks are volunteers. Your professionalism is exemplary. I think it has been demonstrated time and time again when things get emotional, and they do sometimes, even among members or with the public. Your way of handling that and diffusing those situations and being professional and having decorum is an example to others in other public office, and I hope that that's kind of a viral infectious kind of thing that gets out there. Beyond your service to the town is your commitment to your family, and that's where... I already admired you. I already looked up to you, and I've known you since you were kind of a kid. But I really do admire you a ton for what you've done here and what you've done for the town. But your reason for leaving, which I suspect is to my left here in front of us, that your beautiful family makes me admire you all the more. You're doing the right thing, and you're doing it for the right reasons. I know, like everyone has said, you're not going away. You're just going away from this Board. You'll always be active in the town of Wilmington. I know you love it, and the town of Wilmington loves you, and so I look forward to working with you on committees or whatever it is. Let's keep you in the game. But congratulations, Greg, and thank you, as always, for all the time you've given to the town.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that.
Hi, Jonathan Eaton, 78 Glen Road. As the lowest-ranking former member? I was only up here for about the length of a cup of coffee, so I didn't take notes, but you wouldn't expect anything less from me. But Greg, you and I served for three years on the Board together. We didn't always agree on everything, but when we did disagree, we did so respectfully. And I know that you put a premium on modeling civility at a time where that is, I think, an increasingly rare trait, and I appreciate that because you have a very tactful way to lower the temperature in a room and focus on the issues and not let emotions get out of control, and I appreciate that. While we didn't always agree on things, I know that we did bond and become friends over the fact that we are both fathers, and we put a big premium on that. I see Mr. and Mrs. Bendel here, Andrea, Charlotte, Grace, and Madeline, and I know that being on that Board is... It's kind of a whole-family commitment, and you drag along everybody with you, and you have a great supporting cast. You have great parents. Your wife's lovely. At least one of your daughters is a phenomenal soccer player. But I just want to thank you as a member of the community. I know you've advocated for a North Wilmington Fire Substation for quite some time. You've made that your... Really, your reason to continue to march forward for as long as you have. This commitment takes an awful lot of time out of you, and I'm actually really happy that you're going to be able to spend more of that time with the people that have supported you. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Judy O'Connell, 11 Broad Street. So I stand here in a couple of different capacities, obviously, as your assistant town manager, but I had the pleasure to... I grew up in the same neighborhood as Greg. There is a bit of an age difference. Greg is at least a decade younger, if my math is correct, and I remember his parents basically walking by with him in the stroller and his brother Dan. And fast forward years later, when he was in his 20s in 2011, as the data will show, we had no candidates for the Housing Authority. The ballot had closed, and there was nobody that was going to run for that position. And Greg, in his 20s, decided to take his first call for volunteerism and decided to run a write-in campaign on his own accord with a little coaching and some help from the town clerk as to how to do it lawfully, and in very short period of time was able to garner 300 votes within days of that actual election. So that's a credit to you, and that's how you got started in 2011 and served in that capacity for five years. And fast forward into the 2016 range, that's when I ran for my first seat on the Select Board, and that was when you decided to kind of get in on it as well and have served from 2016 to 2025. So collectively, a total of 14 years of public service. So you're hearing a lot of wonderful things being said about you tonight, and I know that you are the first person to have humility and to let your actions do your talking. And I know this is a very uncomfortable moment for you, but it's a very deserving moment for you, and you deserve everything that's being said. So people will say wonderful things about you professionally and personally, and I hope you realize that all of those things are true. There's no secret that I am a Greg Bendel superfan, and I'm proud of that, and I'll stand up in any room and say that. You've been a very loyal colleague of mine, a very loyal friend. I'd like to recognize your parents here, Kathy and Richard Bendel, who have done just a wonderful job raising a son, who has now, years later, become a wonderful husband and a wonderful father, and would be the first to credit the people around you as to the type of team that you've assembled. And you've worked well with any member on any Board or any committee, and that's because of the person that you bring to the table. You put your heart and soul into everything that you do. You've served to the whistle tonight, right up until your very last meeting, and I can't wait to see the things that you will be a part of. It's amazing how you weren't even married when you started on the Board. Now you're married and have three beautiful children, eight, six, and four, and I'm sure they think their dad's great, and I just wanted to stand up and say that we all think that your dad's great, too. So it's outstanding for all that you have achieved. The accolades will be written, but I would say to you that you are a champion, my friend, and you are in the Hall of Fame as it relates to Select Board members for the town of Wilmington. And the Masters just happened, so if there was a green coat, you'd be wearing it tonight. So you are definitely an all-star and someone to be admired, and I am most proud to call you my friend in addition to be calling you a colleague. So thanks very much. Enjoy the celebration. You deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Judy, I always thought he was older than you. I didn't realize. I just, you know, didn't realize.
And I appreciate you recognizing my brother Dan. They did do a great job raising him, no question about it. I appreciate...
And your father's a great disc jockey, too.
Yes.
I mean, he's...
I appreciate this. By the way, this is the only agenda I ever objected to.
Well, before you, before you say anything, I want to make a presentation to you on behalf of the board and the, and the people of Wilmington, the traditional gavel plaque to Greg Gregory B. Bendel, Chairman. He's serving as a select board member from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-five.
Appreciate you, buddy. Thank you very much. Thank you. Frank, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Let Deb take a picture. We should hold them around. Very photogenic group.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna need that.
That was just a look at.
Thank you, yeah. All right. Well, I thank you. I appreciate Kevin. Thank you for putting this together and.
Oh, I think, I'm sorry.
Without objection, I think we can.
All right, girls, because you gotta go home. It's a school night. Gonna get some candy on the way. Where do you want to sit?
Sit at the, yeah, sit at the desk.
You're gonna hear everything you say. Your teachers are listening, so be careful now.
Uh-oh.
Listen, we're gonna take a quick picture. You guys are in shots for a minute. Gracie?
I'm sleeping daddy.
All right, look at the camera with Bev's. You're not gonna get any candy from Bev if you don't. Ready? Look up at Bev. She'll give you a piece of candy. Ready?
Okay, give me a piece of candy.
Come here, one more picture with the parents and Andrea. Come on.
Hallelujah.
Smile at the lady. Oh my God, they're so cute.
That's an awesome texture.
Oh my goodness.
Now, give me a piece of candy.
Charlotte's eight, Gracie's six, Madeline's four.
Hello.
Hi, Gracie.
We got a future singer here, scientist, teacher.
I love it.
Thank you, girls.
Hallelujah.
Good night. What's up with mom?
Perfect song. Oh.
Yep. All right. Bev, you're out of candy, that's for sure. Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks, mom.
Turned into a pumpkin.
Well, now you know what I'll be doing. I really appreciate this. Obviously, it really means a lot. Obviously, I really have always enjoyed the tradition that former members come back, so I greatly appreciate that. But I do, I'm sorry if some of you are hoping that tonight I'll be issuing pardons to anyone on my last meeting, but I, but I will not be. So I won't single anybody out, but I really appreciate that. Obviously, I appreciate my family. My mom and dad are here, my biggest supporters. Dad sends me a text message after every single meeting for the last nine years. Sometimes I thought he thought I did good, other times he didn't. But he was always honest with me, so I appreciate mom and dad, you being supporters of me and my friends and my family, my wife, as you saw, and my girls. When I first ran, we had no children. As was mentioned, now we have three somehow. Jonathan will remember that because Andrea literally went into labor during a meeting, and that was one of the times that I had to excuse myself. Other than that, no, he thought I was joking, but I did, too. I thought she was joking, too. But anyways, we got pretty lucky back in March of two thousand twenty-one. So I hope you'll forgive me for having to run out of a meeting like that. But yeah, I mean, pretty lucky. We'll be celebrating our ten years anniversary, Andrea and I. So she's obviously been the only reason that I'm able to get up here and do all this. So obviously, appreciate them coming in. That's really, obviously, special to me. I appreciate each of you, your kind words. I've really enjoyed working with each one of you, and I'm really proud of this board, you know, the work that we've done this year. And as was mentioned, we don't always agree on everything, but you know, I think we do it in a very respectful manner. And I'm really proud of the way that we've been able to accomplish a lot of good things. And, and that includes hiring our new manager. So I'm really, really proud of that. And he's okay, but, but he's got a tremendous staff. And so I'm obviously, super, super grateful to the staff. I mean, Bev, I mean, you know how I feel about Bev. Nothing gets done without her. And behind the scenes, she's done so much for me. And she, you know, she's, I'm still gonna come hit you up for candy. Because the girls love that. So I really appreciate the fact that you guys have always taken in my girls. They've been running around the halls here for a number of years here now. I think the staff knows when to run and hide, when they hear my girls coming through the hallways. And we'll be back, that's for sure. But, and I appreciate my colleagues who are here, my former colleagues. Really, the only reason I'm up here is that I had learned from all of you. I, you know, I kind of joked about this recently, that I knew that I kind of wanted to run for selectmen back in high school. It was like a running joke, like that I was gonna do it. I think actually Danny Stewart was like the first one who was like, you really should do it. And that might have been like in the eighth grade. But I really like, always looked up to, and I had watched meetings, I'd come to meetings, and, you know, most people want to go to like the NFL or something. I really wanted to come here. And, and I just thought I was like amazed by these people who weren't motivated by money, that they just wanted to volunteer to try to help their town. And I'm just like, these people are amazing that they want to do that. Like, they're not getting paid, and they're doing all these things. It's like, that's what I want to do. And so I watched, and I won't say names because I'll forget somebody, but like, I watched these people, and then they became my friends and my mentors, and it was incredible. All the things that I've learned is because of the people that came before me. And I'm super grateful for each one of you that's here and, and the others as well. I mean, it's just, I just learned so much from all of you, and then we just stayed friends, which I value the most. And each one of you who no longer serve on the board, you know, we, we would talk strategy and learned a lot about this stuff, but most, every single one of you were in a similar situation I am tonight. You left for a really good reason, and it was because of your family. And so a lot of the reason that I made the decision was, you know, based on the conversations that I had had with each one of the former members and why they ultimately decided to leave and, and go off and do other great things. But it was always centered around their family. So I like to think that I'm still taking their advice, which I, I really appreciate. But it's been awesome. I've had some just outstanding mentors, you know, here in this room and then professionally. And I just would be remiss if I didn't thank, like, you know, two of the greatest leaders that I've had in my life to be able to be around were, you know, two of my biggest supporters. When I first wanted to do this, they've since passed on. But Charlie Lyons was a great mentor to me and encouraged me to run, even though he was my boss. He basically told me I should do this. And then I think the greatest leader of men was, was Coach Mark Donovan, who was a really big supporter of mine as well. So I wanted to recognize those two guys. So I've been really lucky to have great mentors and, and leadership roles. And I do want to thank, you know, Jeff. I worked with Jeff for eight years here in this room, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank him. You know, we didn't always agree, but you know, we worked together for a long time, and I'm grateful for that time. Lou was our temp- temporary town manager and, and Lou, like my big brother through this whole thing. And we served together in a couple of different roles, but I'm grateful for his service during that time and his whole staff, by the way. Patty and Mike, you know what I think about you guys. I really appreciate that. And then obviously, when we brought on Judy in this role, which just like meant the world to me because I'm just, I can't, I, I just can't get going on Judy right now because that won't be good for me on television. But just, I just love Judy. I just think she has like the strongest work ethic, and nobody loves this town more than Judy O'Connell does. So, you know, if you're looking for a good role model and, you know, talk about a good role model for my girls, there's no one better than Judy O'Connell, who's been a champion at every level. And there's no reason why, you know, she won't continue to be a champion in this new role. So super excited when that happened. And then obviously, we added Eric, who I think was a really good choice for us. You know, loved working with, you know, him over the last, you know, ten months or so. And, you know, I know he's, I feel, I actually feel really good about leaving right now because it's like we have a good board in place. We have a good assistant town manager. We have a great manager. We have great staff. I mean, obviously, Bev and Tommy and Anthony even before that, Wendy and Kathy and others who have worked with, it's really because of them. I mean, they put all this stuff in front of us, and then we take some votes based on what we think is best. I mean, they're doing all the legwork, and we come up here and look good, sometimes. But you, you guys do that great job. And the town department heads, I appreciate them putting up with me, my silly questions, and the chiefs and everybody. All the town employees have been awesome. I mean, we have really talented people that work for this town, and they do an awesome job. And, and I just, you just don't see that firsthand unless you're in this role. Like, you know, clearly, we have talented people, and you see it. I shouldn't say that. But you really see, you know, the work that goes on when you're, when you're up here and you're in town hall. And it's incredible what it takes to run a town and the things that you've learned. And so I've just learned so much. I just, I'm ju- I'm actually most grateful, and I appreciate your, your sentiments, but I'm like, it's like, they let me stay up here for nine years. Like, this, this was not only really cool, but I learned a lot. Like, I can't even believe what goes on. What a different perspective you gain when you're in municipal government. So like, I just, you know, I remember when I first ran, Mike, you'll remember this, Al O'Connor gave me a Robert's Rules book when I was gonna run. And he was like, you better study this thing. You're gonna need it. And, you know, he was great. You know, I read that book, and I was like, I better, I better learn. I'm never gonna look like these guys that are up there, these guys and gals. So I spent a lot of time reading that book and then learned a lot at the Housing Authority, as Judy mentioned. So it's funny how this thing goes. I was first, early on, criticized for not saying enough up here. And now you can't get me to shut up. So it takes time to find your voice up here. And I really, I know you all know that feeling. And you come up here and you do the best you can. You don't always get it right. But I think if you're trying to, if your heart's in the right place, and I think all of yours are, you know, I think you're setting an excellent example for what our future leaders, I mean, we're not, none of us are gonna be up here forever, and we're gonna need more good people to get involved. I think no better example than the people who are watching you guys right now. So I think that's really important that there, you know, there's gonna be kids that are watching saying, hey, maybe I want to do that. Maybe there's a next kid who wants to do that. And I think that's important that we encourage that. I've served with ten people in nine years, by the way. So at one point, I was the new blood, and now I guess I'm not anymore. But long story short, I, I wrote down some things I was supposed to say here, but this is getting long.
I know, I wrote that for you.
Thank you. Yeah, you did a good job here. Appreciate you typing this into ChatGPT for me. Yeah, long story short, I really, I wish you all the best. I, I will be there to support the town. I encourage you to stay the course, and even when it gets tough to try to continue to do the right things. I know that's not always easy. But I think we're in good hands, and I would encourage you to keep working hard. You know where I'll be, you know? Just tie, you know, I want to devote more time to my kids, and I'm grateful for this opportunity. And it's been awesome. I've been part of a lot of good teams. This is a great team. And I mean, like, the whole staff and everybody who's come before me. That's really the only reason I'm here. I just learned from really good mentors who were up here before, and I really admired them. I still do. And I hope that, you know, I know my students watch because they give me a hard time about stuff sometimes, but maybe, just maybe, one kid will get interested in, in government and want to get involved because we need it. And I'm looking forward to all the future success. Eric, I'm looking forward to your success. Your success is our success.
Yep.
And I think you have a great team. I'm really grateful for your, you know, the positive working relationship you and Judy have. I think we're in great hands. And, and I appreciate everybody letting me do this. This has been, this has been a lot of fun for me. And all right, that sounds like enough, I think.
That gavel. We need order here. Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You know how to clear a room. How could I miss joking with you?
Gotta keep joking.
Oh, I will.
That stuff is important. All right. Back to the business of the town. I don't know if I saw our seven-thirty appointment arrive.
She's probably working.
Wouldn't.
Doesn't necessarily preclude us from handling it if the, if the board wishes to move forward.
Do we have positive recommendations? Will we do, right?
We have positive recommendations on the, yes, so this is the, the license for, the entertainment license for barbecue, Code One BBQ. We have a positive recommendation from the police department and no issues from the building commissioner.
Okay, so is anybody inclined to take up this request? And obviously, we know that this is a new business. That's not, not a new business to town, but a new location. And do we have any reason why we may not take this up?
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
The only thing that I, I have no problem with the application, okay? The only thing that I look at is when we look at the letter that was sent to her, it does say it will be necessary for you or a representation, representative of Code One BBQ be president this year.
That's a good catch.
So again, if you guys want to have it, I, I would support it.
All right, yeah. No, that's a good catch. I mean, I'm clearly not thinking straight after that, but, so I appreciate that. What are other people's thoughts here? I mean, did we have any indication that they were coming? They said they were coming, right? Yeah, something must have come up. Obviously, running a business is not easy.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, I just don't want to set a standard to, I have no issue with this.
Yeah, you're right.
Just because of what it says, I just don't want to set a standard that if they don't show up that we would, you know what I mean?
Probably safe.
Table this for the balance of the meeting, and if they do come in, maybe they watching it on TV and know that they.
Great idea.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, we'll give them obviously some more time. I think that's, that's appropriate.
Caught up at work.
Okay, yeah, I mean, certainly.
And then we'll notify them for next meeting.
Yeah, if not, it sounds like April twenty-sixth, or twenty-eighth, rather.
Do I feel bad bringing that up?
No, no.
No, it's, it's the right thing.
You're right.
Okay, we'll move into communications. First up is actually a memo from myself. And tonight, I have the responsibility of presenting Eric with his performance evaluation, which has been filled out by all five members. Thank you all for taking the time to do that. We know that's not an easy task to do. But as you recall, recently, in the last couple months, we came to a mutual agreement with Eric about an evaluation tool and rubric. And we, each member has taken the time to fill that out and to give some feedback. So I want to thank each one of my colleagues for doing that and getting it back in a timely manner. What I've done is compiled it all into this folder, which I'll request to be pushed, placed into your personnel file after tonight. But in sum, each member had some really nice things to say about you. I think it's safe to say that in your first nine months on the job, we think you're doing a good job. And so that will be reflected, you'll see from the scores and from the feedback that people gave you, that there's some words of encouragement there and a lot of positive feedback. But I think it's safe to say, you know, nine months in, we think that you've dove, dove right in, you know, started to really build some good relationships with people and stakeholders in town and to take some initiative. And I think it is reflective in the members' comments that you have, we really like the idea that you have a good vision for going forward, and we really appreciate the way that you're prepared for meetings and your demeanor, and really, the way that you've been able to stabilize and really, I, I'll dare to say, really improve morale here. And I think the employees, the feedback that we've gotten has been very positive from them as well. So, so tonight, I'll present that to you and, and ask that this be placed into your file. So keep up the good work.
I appreciate, no, and I, I, I will say, I appreciate the, the confidence that the board has shown in me. It is not possible to do this job without so many of the people that you've already talked about, the staff and the manager's office, Judy, Bev, but Tommy and Kathy and Anthony as well, and all the department heads. You can't hit the ground running in a position like this unless you've got people who are already doing the work. So I feel really lucky. I think I said it to Judy last week. There has not been a moment that has gone by since I've accepted this job that I've regretted it. I, I've loved every minute of it, so I, I look forward to continuing. Thank you.
And because of that, we're gonna give you an actual whole year before they evaluate you the next time. It's kind of a little rookie thing we do around here, nine months.
A little nine-month hazing.
All right. Happy reading. All right. You want to take us through the next two, please?
The next is, this is free cash certification. So it's correspondence from Deborah Wagner, Director of Accounts at Mass DOR regarding our free cash position. So we have certified free cash position right now. The certified free cash for the general fund is forty-three million, two hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And for the enterprise, sewer enterprise fund is four thousand, thirteen dollars. So this has all been certified in preparation for town meeting. So that's, that's a positive result at this point. Thank you. The next correspondence is, should probably go, we'll do that the same time as the Board Consider Number Six, which is, it's an inner-office memorandum from Jamie McGoldy, who's our it's an inner-office memorandum from Jamie McGoldy, who's our Public Works Director, and tree warden, which is appropriate in this case, because we're talking about Arbor Day. Wilmington was, received its first Tree City USA designation in twenty twenty-one for the year of twenty twenty. And every year since then, uh, the DPW has maintained that Tree City status. So the board, in order for us to continue that for twenty twenty-five, uh, the select board would be required to make an official Arbor Day proclamation, which is our Board to Consider, number six. Um, and, uh, there's, uh, Jamie's included some really interesting information about what you're required to do and what we've done as a town, um, uh, to meet the Arbor Day requirements. So I think it's a really, I think it's a really meaningful designation, uh, to be a Tree City. And, and so, uh, Board to Consider number six would be, would, uh, if the board would consider signing a proclamation declaring April, uh, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five Arbor Day in the town of Wilmington.
Okay, is anybody inclined to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Misselli. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number seven.
Uh, Board to Consider request from, uh, Peter Hay, the pastor of the Wilmington United Methodist Church, to use the town beach at Silver Lake on Sunday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-five, six thirty a.m. for an Easter sunrise service.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. De Palma. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you. Number eight.
Number eight, Board to Consider the request of, uh, Michael P. Farrar, the Department of Orange Department of Wilmington Public Schools, to use the Town Common and Gazebo on Thursday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, with a rain date of May twenty-third, from five p.m. to nine p.m. for the purpose of a high school honors jazz band and concert band. And on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the rain date of May twenty-ninth, from five to eight thirty for purposes of an elementary string orchestra concert. So it's a couple of very exciting concerts in the common.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you. Number nine.
Board to Consider number nine, a request from, uh, Kristen DiMonico, the President of Soul Sisters Running Club, to use the Town Common and Gazebo on Saturday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and Saturday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, sorry, Saturday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and Saturday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-five, from seven a.m. to nine a.m.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. West. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Board to Consider number ten, a request of Natalie Hardy, our Library Director, to use the Town Common on Thursday, June fifth, twenty twenty-five, from five to eight, for the Harvard Ranch Therapy Alpacas. And Thursday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, from four thirty to seven thirty, for an end-of-summer bash. So, uh, two, two requests in Board to Consider number ten.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kira. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, that's for both requests, right? We're taking them both at the same time?
Well, that's number ten. We, uh, number eleven is a separate one. We haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Two within ten?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. That is unanimous. Thank you. Number eleven.
And Board to Consider another eleven is another request from Natalie Hardy, Library Director, to use the Wildwood Street parking lot on Friday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, from nine to one, for the annual Big Wheels event. And on Monday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, from five to eight, for a bike safety session with Massachusetts, uh, Department of Transportation.
That's a good one.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. West, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. Also unanimous. Thank you.
Uh, Board to Consider number twelve, a request of Denise Prestonhan Ray, a disclosure in accordance with Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty B, relative to summer employment with Wilmington Recreation.
Okay, is there a motion? Grant the request?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. Unanimous. And finally, number thirteen.
Thirteen, a, uh, Board to Consider request of Karen Osgood regarding a disclosure in accordance with Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty B, relative to summer employment with Wilmington Recreation.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kira. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next up is public comments. Would anyone like to be heard? Good evening.
Good evening.
Kevin McDonald, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I stand before you tonight to let you know that, um, I've been going to the school committee meetings relative to the, um, proposed new mega school. And, um, I'll just reiterate what I said to them, that, um, people that work in the building, people that maintain the building, tell me that the North Intermediate is a structurally sound building, and they wanna knock it down and build a new school, uh, for hundreds of millions of dollars. And, um, I'm opposed to it. I do believe that the people who built the school, who designed the school, who engineered the property, knew very well where to put that school. And they're trying to put the school into a field, which is a wetlands, a filled-in area, and it's gonna encroach on those neighbors. But the most important thing that, um, I'm concerned about is the, um, sustainability of the debt, for people in town to be able to handle the increase in their debt. And some of the debt that we have existing is the Wilmington High School debt, the public safety building debt, the, the Newtown Hall debt, which went out for a bond offering, even though we were told by our finance, uh, committee chairman that it would not be impacting anybody. Uh, I don't know where we dreamed that up, but nevertheless, we have water and sewer line debt. You wanna build a substation, that'll put us into more debt. You wanna pu, purchase the Sharapa farm, that's gonna put us into more debt. And even more debt if it's taken by eminent domain and we get sued. Uh, it's my belief that the property's worth about thirty million dollars. And I just recently heard that the Shawshin Tech wants to build a new building. And we also have pending lawsuits. Some of the other schools that have had, um, new projects, such as Wakefield's Technical School, in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Lowell High School, I think, was like around three hundred million dollars, and they ran out of money. So, I'm very concerned that, um, the debt is not sus, sustainable for folks. Uh, Mr. De Palma, Mrs. Misselli, you were at the past meeting. I also, um, mentioned to you that many people have moved out of town. Mr. De Palma, your response to that was that that's propaganda. And so I don't know if you've taken the time to actually research the registry of deeds to see how many people moved out of town, but that might be a pretty good exercise for you to do. I actually, um, brought something with me tonight. This here is, um, a metal stud. And if you drive by the Newtown Hall and some of these other buildings that are getting built up, that's what, that's, this is, this is what they're building exterior walls out of, metal studs. And the North Intermediate is built like a tank. It's built out of masonry. And to knock down a structurally sound building with that type of construction with something like this makes no sense to me. Um, so, Mrs. Misselli, the other thing that I mentioned at the meeting was that it's my belief that the town of Wilmington should have the ability to recruit, recruit the best teachers around. And you mentioned at the meeting, you get up and said that we have the best teachers.
And I stand by that.
And so my question to you is, how many teachers have you sat with? How many classrooms have you sat in?
How many have you?
How many surveys have you done?
How many have you?
Mr. McDonald.
I see the people pulling the kids out of school and sending them to private school.
Really?
And so,
Other people have, you've moved out of town too. Should you tell the residents that, that you're no longer resident, resident of Wilmington?
Mr. McDonald, if you have any questions,
I don't care what your license says.
Yeah, well, you don't care about it very much, but I do wanna thank you. I do wanna thank you.
You're not gonna come at me, and I'm not gonna respond, okay?
I do wanna thank you for letting people know that you didn't know what you were doing when you've been on this.
I did know what I was doing. I have children in the school system. I've taken surveys. I know many teachers. I'm gonna talk over you till you leave. How about that?
Thank you very much.
The last thing that I just wanna say. My time, it's my time.
How about that? How about that? You need to sit down.
Mr. Mr. Bendel, the last thing that I wanted to say was, I sent you an email this week. I sent every member of, an email, and the purpose for the email was to request a gen, agenda item to review our pension commitment, the pension investment location, and the stability of our pensions for our retirees in light of market stability, instability, or questions in that.
Got it. Thank you very much.
And so you continue to reject that, okay? And so since you're leaving, I would just ask the rest of the board if you would consider that, because I think it's an important item. But since you're, um, leaving, Mr. Bendel, and you refuse to have that agenda item, can you tell us what you have to offer to our retirees if there was a market crash, since the investments are invested in the market?
What I have to offer is the next gentleman the microphone. Thank you so much. Mr. Turner, the chair recognizes the gentleman.
Good evening. Stephen Turner, fifty-nine Washington Avenue. And I was coming here to say thank you, Mr. Bendel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your nine years of service. It is greatly appreciated as a resident. And I know, uh, Mr. Golden spoke earlier, but also as a school committee member, really appreciate all you've done for the town, and, uh, your participation on the school board, uh, school building committee as well. So, and thank you to the rest of you as well. Have a good night.
Thank you. Appreciate the kind words. Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? I don't know if I wanna give you one. Last time you said.
I just wanna wish everyone a happy Easter.
Yes, happy Easter. Happy Passover.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that, um, on this coming Saturday at one o'clock in the morning, the Wilmington Minutemen will be on Town Common, and we will answer the call for the, I don't know how many years we've been doing it, but we will be marching. We have, uh, we'll have a police escort from the Town Common up to the Town Center. And we will, we do a permission from the Police Department of Fire Muskets. We do have people that do stand there and, and wave flags at, you know, with us and, uh, support the march that, again, symbolically, it's Wilmington's contribution to the beginning of the Revolutionary War. So I just wanted to take this opportunity, and there'll be advertisements going out elsewhere. But I just wanted to let people know that, you know, when you hear gunfire at one o'clock in the morning,
It's frank.
It's frank, right.
Don't shoot back.
Yeah, there you go.
And the other thing on that is, is that the weather report is calling for rain, so you may be hearing a lot of clicking, not a lot of musket fire.
I appreciate the heads up, literally. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And on behalf of the Wilmington Minutemen, as their current captain, I did wanna thank the members that did attend for the, uh, installation or, you know, part of the installation. So thank you very much. It was a cold, blistery day. Uh, that coin was actually gonna pre, get presented at the, uh, at the event, by the way, Greg, so. But you had something very important to do. I know there was a, I don't know which daughter it was, and it was one of your daughter's birthdays.
It was a big four-year-old birthday in my house. Thank you. You had to get the cake.
So that's very important. So, again, uh, I, I guess lastly, on behalf of myself, I wanna thank you very much for your service. I, I was remiss in, in mentioning your family, your mom, dad, wife and kids, but I personally know what it, you know, what it, I was a selectman back when I had little kids, and I know what it took, and you, things that you miss, so I appreciate your service. And, uh, you know, we'll be on Monday nights if you wanna come back.
Although I don't know if I can come back to this room. I might not find anyone. Have to go down the street soon. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other announcements? Okay, new business?
Uh, we do have one piece of new business.
Sir.
So, uh, currently, the, the, the board previously approved a, uh, car wash scheduled for, uh, April twenty-sixth, uh, at the, uh, the municipal lot adjacent to the Newtown Hall building, uh, for the morning of that date. However, there is a conflict, and so they made a request. So there would be a, a Board to Consider amending the baseball's car wash that's scheduled for twenty-sixth from their morning time until a two p.m. time with a normal rain date of Sunday.
Okay. Anyone inclined to take action? Now we're just giving a, a heads up here.
Well, we, I think we need to change it, because they don't have permission to operate in the afternoon or that.
Anybody inclined to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. It's just same day, they're just switching the time.
Same day. Switching the time from the morning to the afternoon.
To approve the, the adjustment.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. De Palma. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, new business from anyone? I briefly do. I won't be here, but I'm open. Just, I just wanna encourage you all just to keep doing what you're doing. I really appreciate it. Stay the course. As I said, stay positive. I've loved when we had, uh, we had a lot of good memories in here, but when the kids came in, the teams, scouts, that always was the best. So I hope the, I hope that tradition will carry on, will keep celebrating our kids, because I always think that was like some of the best times we've had in here. So, uh, keep doing all that, and I'll be there to support, and I'll be there when we open up that substation, uh, when that day comes. So I look forward to that, and I look forward to all of your successes, and I, I wish you well, and I appreciate each one of your volunteers and keep it going. And, uh, I appreciate everybody who put me up here, the voters and the residents.
I just have one thing when you're done. If I may.
I've gone way over time.
No, 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 I just wanted, I know it's gonna come up in, in new dates, but I just wanted to encourage everybody to go out and vote on the twenty-sixth, for whomever you'd like to vote for. We have, uh, you know, school committee and, um, select board, and, you know, we historically see, you know, low numbers, so I'm just hoping to get the word out a little more that, you know, go out and vote.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Thank you. Any other new business? All right. Important dates, please.
Important dates. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, April fourteenth through the eighteenth, we have the curbside collection of leaves and grass around town. Uh, April sixteenth is the last day to register to vote at the annual town election and for the annual town meeting. Town Clerk's office will be open until five p.m. on April sixteenth. Also on April sixteenth, there's brush drop, brush drop off at Old Main Street from eight to two. April nineteenth, we have the Little League Opening Day Parade. Uh, April nineteenth, we also have brush drop off at Old Main Street from nine to four. Uh, April twenty-first, that's next Monday, town offices will be closed for Patriots Day. Uh, April twenty-third, we have brush drop, brush drop off at Old Main Street from eight to two. April twenty-sixth, we have brush drop off from Old Main Street from nine to four. And more importantly, we have the annual town election. Polls will be open from eight to eight. Also on April twenty-sixth, very important, we have a welcome home, uh, for the remains of Marine Corporal John E. Edwenson Jr. Uh, that will be happening at noon, um, at the Wildwood. April twenty-eighth, we have, uh, our next select board meeting here at Town Hall, Room Nine at seven o'clock p.m. Uh, April twenty-eighth through the twenty-ninth, there's curbside collection of, uh, leaves and grass. April thirtieth, we have brush drop off at Old Main Street from eight to two. Uh, May second, we have the Special Olympics Unified Games at Wilmington High School at ten a.m. May third, we have brush drop off at Old Main Street from nine to four. And then May third, importantly, annual town meeting at the High School Auditorium at nine a.m. We have an annual town meeting and a special town meeting, both at nine a.m. Please, everyone come to the town meeting. We, we really, really appreciate everyone showing up and, and participating in town government. Uh, May seventh, brush drop off, Old Main Street from eight to two. Uh, May tenth, brush drop off, Old Main Street from nine to four. And May twelfth through sixteenth, curbside collection of leaves and grass. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Absolutely. Town meeting. Hope to see everybody there. And election day, as was mentioned, a very important one, but please, do not write my name in. How this all started.
We're already organizing that.
No, no.
Well, you did run, run one running candidate, campaign before, I heard.
Yes. So, uh, that once was enough. Thank you. Uh, finally, uh, this is a really special one. Uh, salute to service tonight goes to Corporal John E. Edwenson Jr. Has been pretty well documented over the last couple of weeks. Uh, we have some big news around Mr. Edwenson. Uh, tonight, we salute him. He's, uh, served in the United States Marine Corps. He was a Wilmington native and was killed in action during World War Two at age twenty-one on September twenty-fourth, nineteen forty-two, when his unit was ambushed. John gave the ultimate sacrifice for his country, and now, as a community, we finally get to welcome him home and return him to his family. So we anticipate that his remains, uh, which have, uh, recently been discovered, will be brought to, uh, town on April twenty-third or April twenty-fourth. And residents are inclined to, uh, are invited to line up the route on the way, uh, on, as he makes his way home. route on the way, on, as he makes his way home. And then on Saturday, April 26th, the services will take place with military honors at the Wildwood Cemetery at approximately 12:30 p.m. Residents are welcome to attend and John will be buried with military honors, as I mentioned, at his family lot in Wildwood Cemetery as we honor him as an ultimate hometown hero all these years later, but obviously still very well deserved. And so tonight, we salute him and hope that we'll see everyone there on the 26th as we bring this hero home and give him a proper burial and show him the respect that he's earned. So with that, we salute him and we thank him for his service and we send our condolences and best wishes to his family.
Absolutely.
And with that.
Mr. Chair, having heard from.
Yes.
Code One BBQ.
Yeah, nothing on the barbecue. I think, I think we're.
Taking it until the 26th?
Yeah.
28th, I mean.
Would anybody want to officially put that on the books for us that we're gonna table that until we can?
I'll make a motion to table.
Table the entertainment license for Code One BBQ.
28.
By the way.
The 28.
Two times.
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. De Palma. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote. It's unanimous. And finally, is there a motion to adjourn?
The Chair, for the last time. Yeah, make a motion that we adjourn under Chair Bendel's command.
I gladly, I gladly accept that motion. Thank you. Is it seconded by?
Second.
Jump ball goes to Kira.
Kevin.
Thank you both. Any discussion? I hope not.
Nope.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Passover. Happy Easter.